I'd like to open the special meeting, uh, November 29th, 2021. I show we have a full, no, uh, almost full quorum.
Just with some Bob.
Missing Councilman Mark Elise. But I will need a motion to
recess the meeting.
recess the meeting and move it to
Banks, uh, Banks Fellowship Hall, 10,012 Newtown Road.
Banks Fellowship, so Banks Fellowship Hall, whatever the address you gave, so. All's in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. All right, I'd like to reconvene the village council special meeting Monday, November 29th, 2021. Need a motion to reconvene.
Amen.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Motion passes. First up, we have, uh, we do show a full quorum, so, uh, with, uh, Bob participating remotely. So with that, I'll need a motion to consider allowing council members to participate remotely.
So move.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Aye.
Motion passes. Uh, next up, we had a little delay there. Next up, we have adoption of the agenda, since we are all here for one item. I don't think there's going to be any changes at that. Is that correct?
Yep.
All right. So we'll need a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion passes. Next up, we have updating the Newtown Marvin Road Roundabout, NC DOT project U-6088. Uh, we have today from NC DOT, Sean Epperson and Brett Kinnick.
That's close. Good night.
Good night.
Yeah. I've met, I'm not mad at anyone who got right the first time.
Don't get her, don't get her next time then. So welcome, guys. Uh, thank you for being here and thank you for the audience being here too. I think there's a lot of people interested in finding out what's, what's going to be happening here. Where do we want to start, Christina? We, um,
So we can go ahead and turn it over to the gentleman here representing DOT. Long story short, uh, we received some notice back in early October that, uh, there was a project update coming. It's actually the flyer that you're holding right there in front of your hand. At public input session, I had some conversation with Travis Presslar, who's the district engineer. Maybe had some correspondence with you guys, I'm not really sure. We subsequently were then notified that the project was still expected to have construction starting in summer of '22. Something changed within a week. I'm not really sure what happened, but then we received notice that it potentially could be summer of '23. So we've had some back and forth, trying to figure out what it, what the exact dates are. They're here tonight to present to you, um, what the causes for delay have been over the years and kind of where we're at and where we're going. So if you want to turn it over to them, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I think, uh, that's probably the starting point.
Before that, can everyone online hear us and see the PowerPoint?
Bob, can you see the PowerPoint?
I can, yes.
I mean, do we have online? So how would they know? Or did they just speak up?
I checked, there's like 10 or 15 online.
Okay.
Or Bobby, Bobby and everybody else.
So we'll, we'll just, uh, at this point, based on kind of what happened is what really spurred this meeting, you know, to just kind of bring us all up to speed and hopefully we have some questions for you or you may be able to answer before we even have to ask. Turn it over to you guys.
So I'm not sure, uh, almost forgot how to do this live in person. Been giving presentations and whatnot, uh, remotely, um, for feels like quite some time. Feels like years, maybe it's been year and a half, two years. I don't know, good truth. But, uh, it's really good to be here in everyone's presence. Maybe I would generally go up to that corner of the room, but does this work for everybody?
Totally fine. I think everyone can hear you, so that's
Okay, and they can hear me online.
Yeah.
So again, thank you for having us. Um, we're here to give an update on, uh, this very valuable and much needed roundabout project for this community. I'm Brett Kinnick, I'm the Division 10 engineer for NC DOT. Uh, we're, uh, Division 10, there's 14 divisions across the state. Uh, we've got a five county area, that's Mecklenburg, Anson, Stanley, Berris and Union Counties. And so, uh, we've got a lot of projects like this, um, but, but, uh, the, the areas surrounding the Village of Marvin, Union County in particular, certainly one of our busiest areas. You know, it's, it's a good problem to have, uh, growth, um, uh, economic vitality, but it, it also brings us to points like this where we've got projects that, that, uh, aren't getting here as quickly as we would like. And so oftentimes, we find ourselves in, in these situations. So, um, Sean Epperson is here, uh, also. Sean is our division project team lead and Sean's role in the division is, uh, to oversee all the design, uh, planning, project development work that goes into all of our construction projects across our five county area. And so with that, we'll click on to the next slide and try to go ahead and get started. Just really quick, uh, kind of a, a high level, uh, concept view of, of the, the roundabout that we're proposing. Right now, you're looking at a four leg roundabout. You know, we've, we've spent a lot of time trying to engineer this project to keep costs down, uh, trying to engineer it to make it most efficient. Coordinated with property owners, we're going to get into a lot of that, um, a lot of design challenges. Going to talk to you a little bit about that, uh, southernmost first, that fourth leg, uh, down Metal Art Lane. You know, how that's actually still maybe even up in the air. We'll get into some of those details in a minute. But, um, this is the project, uh, as we know it today in concept form. Of course, that's not the final design plans. We'll go on to the next slide here. Talk a little bit about history. I don't know where. I thought this only happened when you were doing it virtually. Of course, we are kind of virtual.
Semi-virtual.
Semi-virtual, yeah. That's, I, I've been using that as a, a crutch. Anytime I have a, a mess up during an online presentation, I can, oh, no, we're having trouble. But, um, this, this talks, this slide talks a little bit about our, our project history. You know, how did we get started? Why, why are we building this project? You know, I think, uh, anybody that travels through this area recognizes this as a, uh, a, a project that is in high demand, right? The traffic volumes are such that there's been, you know, um, police officers out there directing traffic, um, you know, and, and, uh, a lot of times you'll find that, uh, we struggle to fund projects, to find funding for projects. But in this case, this project came about as a, a partnership between NC DOT and the Village of Marvin. There's not, um, there's not always a, a funding source that you can just reach out and grab, right? If you want to fund a project through the larger STI program or statewide transportation improvement plan, that process generally takes many years actually to, uh, rank, score, prioritize and fund a project. And you can see that this project was actually created in 2017, which in transportation terms is kind of quick. It was, uh, honestly funded at a pretty low, um, number, but it, and at the time, it was closer to our average range for roundabouts in rural areas. I say that with air quotes for y'all online who can't see me. Uh, we, we know it's not really rural, particularly when you think about a traffic lighting perspective. But there's a, there's a, there's a compilation of funding here. That STBGDA, uh, that's actually a federal, uh, fund that goes through the local planning organization. It comes to NC DOT first, but it's up to the local planning organization as to where that money goes to. So we asked for that money, uh, in, in coordination with the town or the village rather. Uh, that kind of fund takes a 20% local match. We partnered 50% on that match. You know, so there was, there was all this work that went on the front end to figure out how can we get this project funded? And unfortunately, like a lot of our projects, um, over the last several years, our prices have gone up. And you may, uh, experience that in your own personal lives, uh, property tax or property values going up. You know, you can see, uh, what your house was worth on Zillow compared to a few years ago and see very quickly, uh, that, uh, it, it, we are now in a different era. That has tremendously affected our industry, really the constructing industry in general. So we do have a substantial price increase, cost increase, uh, compared to where we started. But at the end of the day, um, I think we've done a fairly good job in partnership, uh, bringing together local funds, uh, some funds from the General Assembly, uh, some federal safety dollars, some state safety dollars for matches. So we've done as best we can to come up with the funds for this project. So where I, where we stand today, I feel pretty good about. And I think it represents, um, a partnership that we've come to, uh, to reach with this project to bring it forward. Now, we, we get this, we get started in 2017, but, you know, as everyone knows, we walked into a new world when COVID hit. But from NC DOT's perspective, uh, the financial challenges that COVID brought are actually, uh, uh, started before COVID, uh, with other issues. And so we can go to the next slide and we'll talk about project history and NC DOT's funding challenges and how that impacted this project. So, um, our cash balance, we actually have a legislatively mandated cash, uh, cash, uh, balance, say minimal cash balance that we have to maintain in the conference at any given time. That number is around $273 million. Uh, that is not enough funds. I can tell you, so I operate, um, uh, an organization of this size that has $6 billion on the books at any given time of active, uh, commitments and, um, projects. So, um, we experienced, uh, a decline in our cash balance, beginning, you can see where we were, close to $1 billion to end of 2018, all the way down, uh, on into 2019 where we're, you know, below 400 million. That 273 mark, um, is a target that we really need to stay away from because what happens at that point is NC DOT has to actually stop contracting. We can keep active contracts open because, you know, if you have an active contract, you could actually cost yourself money if you try to cancel something that's under construction because your contractor is going to sue you. So aside from that, um, you know, we, we had a tremendous amount of storms that we weren't prepared for, you know, uh, not, we shouldn't use the term weren't prepared for, but from, um, a financial perspective, if we're at, used to spending $60 million a year in storm response, uh, in any year for three years running, we're spending nearly 300 million, that impacts, um, your, your cash balances. Other things like MAP Act settlements, well, that's a whole other conversation. You know, that cost of department money, um, was not, uh, it was a, um, a judge's decision, uh, that didn't really have any, uh, bearing on, on what we thought where we should have stand. But at the end of the day, you can see our, our, our cash balances started declining. So we actually had to pause all projects, almost all projects that were in design for a while. Okay, that was summer 2019, all before we knew about COVID. You know, this was not something we were expecting, right? Uh, this project was not on that list because it had that special funding space I mentioned, that STBGDA fund. That's actually a low call, we refer to it as a locally administered project, um, meaning the towns could take those mon, those funds and actually put together project together themselves, you know, it served the same capacity that we're serving. But we partner with our local municipalities whenever, uh, we're asked pretty much to help deliver those projects. So this project was still able to move forward at that time. So moving forward, we'll go to the next slide.
Real quick, you mentioned that number 273, is it?
Yeah.
What is that number?
So it's some, I think that, I think it's a, it's, uh, I want to say seven and a half percent of our
Balance requirement.
For them?
Yeah, it's a statutory, you know, it's, it's in legislation that we've got to maintain this certain level.
Okay.
So if we fall below that, we stop. We stop any new contracts.
It'd be the equivalent of our fund balance or what they call stabilization by state statute.
Okay.
Yeah, we're, we're, we are in a, and, and the DOT had never experienced that, right? So, and we didn't hit it here. We, we were, we kept ourselves up, but it was, it was touch and go for a little bit. So you can go to the next slide and we'll keep talking about the issues that impacted. Again, I'm talking about almost every project across the state, not just this one. You know, we took drastic measures to, to, to keep our cash balances up to a reasonable level. We stopped, uh, PE and right of way acquisition on nearly every project. Delayed these project lettings, meaning we didn't go to construction, we didn't let new construction contracts. Uh, we, we routine maintenance, you may have noticed the grass getting higher, the trash wasn't getting picked up. We got a lot of pothole complaints. We, uh, we were all furloughed for a brief period of time, just all in the, in, in the intent of saving us some money. You can even, a local example here, uh, we, we included this photo, you'll see a pipe that was under, uh, 218 in Union County. That pipe became separated. We knew we had an issue, went out and inspected it, realized that, hey, we have a serious issue. You can imagine if that was under a roadway, this was after the fix was made. But, you know, we've got to make a critical decision at that point. Do we close this road? Or do we try to make a temporary fix? Well, we, you know, we've got some pretty good folks that are well seasoned. They made a temporary fix, but that's not something that you prefer to keep like that, right? But that was commonplace. We had to defer maintenance. We didn't get to fix this thing until earlier this year. So that's the kind of stuff we did to get our cash balance under control, right? Keep going to the next slide and we'll talk about, you know, what I thought was the perfect storm when we experienced it, with, with the storms that were impacting us across the state, with the MAP Act, with rising costs. And then suddenly we walk into a pandemic. And, uh, NC DOT, it, it, we, we received nearly all of our funding, uh, uh, through the, the gas tax. There's the, the, you know, there's DMV sales, new vehicle purchase tax, all that stuff. But the gas tax is by, by far the, the biggest fund source that we've got, right? And everyone remembers now, uh, what happened when we, when, when COVID came. You know, we were already, as I mentioned, kind of in a tight spot. You know, we were up against, uh, that cash floor. We didn't need to go into that cash floor. It would have caused, uh, substantial, uh, issues for us. But when the gas tax revenue started dropping, when the stay at home orders stopped vehicles. I mean, if you drove during that time period, you'll know, you might remember, you know, how open were the roads? I was amazed. I mean, I drive a long way to work. Part of that goes like down 485 around Charlotte and it was, I mean, it was, it was crazy. I mean, I remember thinking this is like apocalyptic. I mean, there's nowhere on the road, that's just me and a handful of other people. Well, ultimately, what that did was that, that pushed us down below our cash floor, right? I mean, so we had to stop. And so this project was paused. This project and the rest of the projects that weren't paused, okay? So every other project had already been paused to save, to save funding. These locally administered projects with the specialized STBGDA type funding, we tried, we tried to keep out of that category. It was, it just couldn't happen. I mean, the money wasn't there because even though that's a federal fund source, we get reimbursed. We had to spend state funds first, then we get reimbursed. So we didn't have, the money wasn't in the bank, yeah? I mean, it was literally to that point. And that's unprecedented for NC DOT. I mean, it was a difficult time for all of us. Again, we, you know, suspended any additional projects. Uh, there was no more hiring. Uh, we cut loose, you know, any temporaries, we cut loose our consultants. I mean, it was, it was very, uh, troubling time for us. But we'll keep going, talking a little bit more about history and leading up to where we are now. If you get the next slide please. Do we get the next slide please? Yeah. Okay, so, um, we're, we're actually back in very good shape. One thing we figured out, um, that, you know, the, the department, NC DOT, uh, as a state agency is, uh, we kind of describe ourselves as a great big ship sometimes. It, it, we're slow to turn, right? But we, we were, we, we hit the brakes pretty hard and we stopped ourselves pretty quick. But we did slowly turn ourselves back around with that and with actually, um, the unanticipated increase in revenue streams, right? So you may have heard, um, news stories where, uh, that described the economy as recovering much more quickly, much more rapidly than it was expected. You know, we do a lot of projections that's, that, that tell us what's our funding going to be next year, two years, five years. No one thought we would be where we are today, so we're actually back at $2 billion, over $2 billion of cash in the bank, which is above the top tier of legislatively, of legislative limitations, right? It's above the top line. So we're, we're back on the other side, but that's another story, we're working on that. Right now for this project, because we were turned back on, um, you know, we, uh, you can see there, we were suspended in May of 20. Back in, uh, 2021, we were able to restart our preliminary engineering. We got that design work restarted, it was already ongoing. The right of way phase, I think Sean, weren't we already there in right of way? While we were suspended in DE, meaning we were working on two phases at once, we were able to restart that in May. You know, we, it, it actually, if you think about all those stops we talked about, all the preliminary engineering, right of way acquisition that had to be stopped, that slow moving ship as we turned ourselves around, it takes time, but that's also intentional to some degree. Because if we flipped the switch and said, all right, every project across the state, how many thousand plus projects we've got going on? You flip that switch all at once and every project starts all at once, well, number one, that's a strain on the industry. It's already a strained industry. And the resources aren't even there to crank up that quick, right? The money's not always there when you need it to be there all at one time, right? Because we're kind of like everyone else, we get our money, you know, month to month through, through the revenue streams, right? Through the gas tax and all that. So we couldn't just flip a switch and turn every project on at one time. This project, we were able to move forward in May with right of way and that was a critical step. We needed to be moving forward right of way, you know, really several months earlier in order to meet, um, that original summer of '22 construction timeframe. Uh, right now, we're back buying right of way, we're negotiating right of way. We're, we're working towards the utility relocation phase because that's the next critical step. We've got to move utilities to get out of the way of construction, right? You know, there's a pole there, there's a gas line, there's a water line, whatever. Those are just things you have to continue to build a road. Let's go on to the next slide if we can. And, and if, uh, when we get into a little more detail, uh, if, if I have to turn to Sean, if we have any questions or missed steps, uh, I'm sure he'll keep me on track here. But, um, this project, like every other project, uh, we, you know, we've got challenges, you know? We don't call them really problems because it's the nature of the business, right? I mean, you're gonna, you, you've got a lot of, um, a lot of stakeholders in any type of construction project that involves a roadway with, that have thousands and thousands of cars traveling on it every day, right? Then you've got the property owners that are directly impacted by the widening and us buying property, you know? So these challenges, um, right now, we, you know, we knew we had a three leg roundabout, was the original design, but, um, we've been working on that fourth leg design that we mentioned earlier, uh, for some time now. That's been, that's been our plan. And it, it is still our plan to a degree and we'll go to, I think we jumped ahead a slide there.
Wait, I advanced it. We advanced it. I, we don't, you don't need to go into all these details on the
That's fine too. I, so this, this, this slide actually talks a little bit about that fourth leg and you can see what that exhibit from the, the, the property owner negotiations, that red and that green, that's, that's the area needed for the, um, the fourth leg. So the red, we, we would need that if it was a, a three legging, right? Three legged roundabout. We need the green, uh, space if it's a fourth leg. That fourth leg, that green area was actually originally going to be donated by the property owner. Very recently, Sean, this two, not, I mean, days ago, week ago, I'm not sure when, the property owner is now saying, now I'm not going to donate that. Well, you guys remember the funding chart that we showed beginning the presentation? We've compiled all these funds, we've, uh, engineered ourselves away from all of the issues as best we can. So we really don't have it in the calculus to purchase that fourth leg. Not to mention, there's not a demand for it today. That was, um, something that we had included because we knew there was development coming. It was a desire locally, it made sense, the property owner was going to donate, so it made sense for everybody to do it. But without that donation, we, we don't know that we're going to be able to include it. That conversation is still ongoing, just like many other, um, property owner negotiations and design changes, right? That always seem to occur last minute. You know, going on through project challenges, the, uh, appraisals, um, had to be paused and, you know, that, the, the staffing shortage, you know, a lot of that's got to do with, um, appraisers. I mean, it's, it's all these projects, you know, even though we didn't turn them on every single one at the same time, a lot of these projects have to go back through the process, get into appraisal. There's only a certain number of folks that do that type of work and it's taken way longer than it used to to get that done.
So when did the appraisals, the newest round of appraisals take place?
So I think they, they've been taking place over the last several months. Sean, you might have the date, I don't know the exact timeline.
Most of them have been, um, ordered, not all of them have come in. And, okay.
So like, okay, go ahead.
Okay, and so, you know, where we, you know, move, you know, just keep moving on here, you know, we've got this utility challenges. Some of those challenges come on the front end, but coordinating with utility owners, uh, some of them are going to come in the constru, near the construction phase when we need to get these utilities out of the way. Those utility owners, um, those, those folks operate outside our, uh, control, right? We can't, we don't have a whip to sit, to crack over their heads to say, hey, get out there and move that line. You know, they, they generally speaking coordinate with us, but that is a factor that we, we could influence construction delivery. We're going to the next slide. So, um, all, all of these properties, these parcels, um, we've been in, in negotiations with each one of these folks the whole time. I mean, there is a long list of, uh, items that we could get into detail about, but that we're not going to, that we have, we have coordinated with each and every one of them, uh, to make the project better for the property owner, cheaper for the department, cheaper for the village, right? So that's, that's just a typical challenge that we go through and that's something that's been ongoing, um, this, this entire time. That fourth, that fourth leg, uh, that, that was a little bit of a surprise though. That's, uh, I described it, you mentioned the spokes at the 11th hour, um, but we're going to continue to work through that, right?
And when did that, when did that happen?
Oh gosh, just a couple of days.
Okay, so that, that has no effect of, you're just learning that now, that should have no effect on any of the other stuff.
That's right. We're just, you know, we have to continue to make any plan changes, anything like that.
Right, that, that, that happens in almost every project. I'm sure you find out and you've experienced that with every roundabout.
Rarely in the, when we're out there buying right of way, it's just been pretty challenging. Let's get to the next slide.
Can I just tag on to that real quick?
Yes.
Because maybe I'm confused and I'm awfully sometimes confused. You're saying that, the dates don't match up here. You're saying that the fourth leg, they just told you they're not willing to donate that.
Yes.
Back on an email here, on the 7th, you said everything's a go. On the 14th, you said we're going to push it to the spring of '23. So on October 14th, did we know then that the, the people that owned or, or were going to donate the land on the parcel number four for the fourth leg? Did we know then?
We thought the donation was still on.
Okay, so that should, so that should delay it to the spring of '23.
So that shouldn't delay it.
That didn't cause, that, that, yeah, that has the, I'm just, that's what we've got in front of us. We're going to continue with that. That did not by any
Because this just didn't seem to match up because
No, we're not saying that delayed by any means, by any means, no.
Okay.
And could it cause further delay? You know, we, we don't, we think we can work around it, but we, we've got to have a hard line and a unified position, uh, because we're, we're, it affects each entity.
Okay. I'm sorry.
So the last slide, it'll, it'll talk about what we've got accomplished, right? So we have to have right of way, um, certification, utility certification. These are federal milestones that we have to achieve. Then the let date is when we can say, you know, we can advertise a contract and we can let the contract to and notify the, um, the bidder that they have won the contract. The bidder's got to get all their ducks in a row, um, get, uh, all their bonding and insurance and all that stuff. So December right now, with the conservative, um, uh, schedule is when we believe we can confidently say we can start construction. Well, if anybody's in the building industry, you know that, uh, December is not the best time to start dating the dirt. However, there are certain elements of work that, um, that we think can be achieved. There's also the chance, because we're going to continue to push, if we can push this schedule back, say, two months, there's a good, there's a chance, okay, that we could deliver this sooner and have meaningful construction, uh, work going on ahead of the winter months, right? So if you think about it, it, you could start a contract, you could start a construction contract, uh, but if you get into the winter months and you're not fully up out of the ground, or you run into seasonal limitations, we have, uh, temperature restrictions on things like concrete and asphalt placement because the materials don't perform well at those lower temperatures. But just getting it out of the ground, you know, if you don't achieve that before you get into the months of January and February, you get kind of paused anyhow. There's not a lot of dirt work that goes on here.
What's the estimated timeframe from breaking ground to finished product?
So if, if, uh, everything was, was, uh, perfect and you had the right time of year, um, you know, I would say 12 weeks. I think Sean, you had estimated, uh, the team had estimated eight weeks for a closure of the intersection, uh, 12 weeks for what I would call substantial completions. There would be
Three months.
other pieces of work to be done. You know, you might have some grading to finish up on the edges, you might have some vegetation that needs to get established and then
This got to start by September, October, it's probably not going to get finished by the time it gets to gold.
Yeah, that's, I mean, it's, and that's true with any project, right? You know, it doesn't matter what you're building, you know, you, you've got to plan around the winter. That sewer line, I didn't get to the details of it, but one of the things we had to do was run a sewer line to one of the properties to avoid, um, taking of the property, uh, because they own a septic system now and we couldn't reestablish the septic system. We, that can start earlier than the rest of the construction, so we're trying to use that to our advantage. If we can get the other utilities out of the way, all that coordination happens, utility owners comply, get their stuff moved, we can get that piece of it started. If there's enough time left in the construction season, we want to, we want to get as much, um, work done as we can in 2022. But what we don't want to do is we don't want to compress the schedule artificially and have a very short window and say, okay, Mr. Contractor, get this done quickly, because what happens when you do things like that, you drive up your bid costs, right? If you, if you insert risk into If you, if you insert risk into the contract, the contractor's going to bid that risk, it'll drive up the cost, as we've already discovered. This project struggled to find the funding to begin with, and we just don't have those funds available. So as we continue to work through that fourth leg issue, continue to see if there's any way to compress the schedule, we'll know more about it, but this is our best conservative estimate of the schedule. And, and that was it, y'all. We can go back through pieces, you can go to the question slide, or go back through slides if you have specific questions.
So how many cars, how many cars do we have that come through?
I mean, fifteen thousand.
Fifteen thousand, okay. We got fifteen thousand cars. So I'm going to take issue with when your opening statement, when you were saying it's a good problem for us to have. Here's the deal, there's no way, we, we're 6,800 people in Marvin. There's no way 16,000 cars are Marvin cars. We are essentially a cut through for Weddington, for Waxaw, for all those different areas, yet we bear the brunt for the last three or four years to put officers there that probably affected us when it came to safety because we were putting them there at critical times to relieve, so that may have hurt us in that. And by the way, we were dealing with this way before 2017. That's when it was approved, I can agree. But, so, that, that is where I'm, we have, there's no destination here. We're essentially a cut through. And my fear is that, you know, they say strike when the iron is hot, when the iron's hot, and we, I feel like we, we haven't, that nothing has been done. And I have another question, how many municipalities are currently in North Carolina taking over roads from the state?
How many aren't? I mean, I can't, I can't give you a number, but it's consistent. We, we transfer roads to
But there's not many. I mean, it's not like
There's a lot in Division 10. I can't speak for the rest of the state.
It's a lot, it's a lot of municipalities.
We are, we're taking it, I mean, you know, the
Anyone around us is not taking them over. Weddington's not taking over roads. They're not on, they're not, they have not even talking about taking over roads, nor is Mineral Springs, all these towns around us. So my point to that is, is we, we should be a priority because we're trying to take over the roads. In fact, I think at one point, we proposed us, because I, I wanted to do it in today's dollars, you talked about how the prices are going up. We had proposed, and maybe it wasn't a formal proposal, but I know I was in front of DOT people, is let's do a bond to the community, and let's get this done at today's rates, because if it was a money issue because of COVID, you know, why, why couldn't we do a bond and take an IOU from you guys and just get this on?
That may have been something we could have done, but what we couldn't have done was entered into new contracts when we got one of that cash flow. If that were to require us to enter a contract with you, which it would have to exchange the funds, we wouldn't have been able to do it based on the current legislation. But we're, I mean, we're, we operate with, you know, we've got our, we've got our perimeters, but we go outside of them. I mean, we're willing to talk about any concept that would advance a project, we would do anything we could.
Yeah, and, and one of the reasons we talked about that in an open meeting, I can't remember what meeting was it, because we know we're on the hook per your contract at 50% of the overruns. Is that still
Correct.
the case? So as time goes on
But it's still, the way the agreement's currently written is we would
Right, that's right. But we found the, we found the small construction funds that reduced your local match to help a little bit.
Small construction contingency.
Right, it was 100,000?
That was a contingency, and then the division, we kicked in
Sixty-six.
Sixty-six, which was all we had. I mean, I know that's, that's pennies in our, in our world, but it's all we had.
So because we have consistently had, or tried to consistently have officers at the corner to make sure that we don't have people die and people get in bad accidents, which last time we had a conversation, you said, because we didn't have enough accidents is why it wasn't advanced.
We never funded with safety money.
Right. So it wasn't, so we were saving people's lives, and this project got delayed because of that. Can DOT give us some funds to assist, help assist with the traffic mitigation? Because it's costing us about $90,000 a year to consistently have people out there.
So the, the short answer is we don't have any discretionary funds in the division to cover any such costs.
Okay.
There, you know, could there be other funds from, you know, the general fund that would be controlled by the General Assembly? You know, I certainly can't speak for them, but from the DOT's funding perspective, we operate under STI legislation, which requires us to, you know, to fund projects like we've done here, or the discretionary fund process through the local planning organization, which is CRTPO, which is, you know, that's our main two project funds, but then we've got our operating funds, which are, you know, restricted to our, our operating cost. And so we would have no fund source that legally, that we could legally tap into.
Since it's technically safety, though, couldn't they access the safety fund?
Well, we need more accidents. So how long does it, how long, how long should we take the officers away to have accidents for?
I mean, I'm not going to answer that. I apologize. I mean, I, I mean, that's, that's something that we could, yeah.
But I mean, how, I mean, how many accidents, like, how long's the study have to be? Like, how, I mean, there's, there's clearly a parameter with how many accidents have to happen within a certain amount of time.
So what you would have to do, you would have to solve a problem with it, right? You'd have to be able to demonstrate the way it works to find safety funds is you'd have to do a study, see how many accidents occurred.
So how long's the study?
Do a benefit cost ratio over some period of time.
They typically look at a five-year crash study.
Five-year, okay. So we've, so, okay.
So, so let's say we look back, we look back, we do a crash study specifically for the purpose of
It's not effective.
We don't have any, because we have
We have officers at the critical times.
We have officers there for four years, so we're good.
Right, so if you wouldn't have the accidents, then
Okay, so, okay.
I think we're kind of chasing our tail here, and I'm, and I'm sorry, guys, and I know that y'all are trying to work with us, and we're, we're a team trying to ultimately both get this done. But I got two issues, and they're all around these emails and these dates, and when I put the two together, and I've already identified the other ones, when I look at these emails and we're going, okay, yeah, we're on, and then all of a sudden, no, we're not. And my concern is, looking at this, I might as well take this and put it in the fireplace. Because something happened, and I don't know if you guys are going to tell me or not, or somebody at DOT, upper DOT, or somebody in the federal coffers are going to tell me. Something happened, this didn't get pulled together, and I'm concerned, as a person here in Marvin, that this, that, that little something's going to happen again, and this, you might as well say, December 1st of 2034. Because someone's going to say, no, mine's more important. Nope, we didn't get this done. Nope, we didn't get that done. And I'm not trying to press you guys, I'm not coming down on you and saying you're, you're trying to push up against us. Something happened, and if it's
Where, where's the, where's the timeline? I mean
Well, I'm looking at, I'm looking at this, the email, and I'm seeing on the, I'm seeing on the 14th that the project from summer of '22 to spring of '23, which is the timeline, and maybe I'm missing something, but, but then we look, and it says, one week later, on
The 14th.
So the public involvement that went out was something that took two months to put together, longer than it should have. So when we started that process, we still thought '22, summer '22 was possible and likely. I will say, even when this project started back up, me and Christine talked about, you know, if we can't get to the summer '22, because I knew it was going to be tight to get to the summer '22, could we go to the spring and impact school? And we don't typically like to close down intersections, completely shut the intersection down when school's in session, because of the impact on the bus routes and school routes and all that. But with this intersection being as close to the county line as it was, we felt, I felt we could probably make that work. I hadn't talked to the school system, they're aware of it now. So I will say, even when this project started back up, even when we were doing that public involvement, and at that time, even then, I knew summer '22 was going to be tight, but it was possible, and it was what was on the books.
But why was it going to be tight? What, 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 what was?
Because from the time we were told we could move, start buying right-of-way in May of '21, we all had to do summer '22, it gave us 12, 13 months to buy right-of-way and move utilities.
So in January of this year, when you had a conference call with us, you guys were starting appraisals?
No, we couldn't start back on any right-of-way acquisition until May.
May.
That's not what you said on, I mean, I just, I just listened to the meeting. So in January 28th, '21?
Well, that was preliminary engineering.
Nope, he said appraisals, because we were talking about the
Right-of-way was started in May.
I'm telling you what the, what the audience said, because we even talked about the re-evaluation for the county, and you said, I didn't know that was happening. Is that not, is that not accurate?
I remember us talking about the reeval, I remember us talking about that.
You're talking about a previous meeting, not this one.
No, yeah, the previous.
I'm talking about January 28th, '21.
Okay, apologize.
You said that the appraisals, you guys were going to start the appraisals.
If I did, I misspoke. I knew at that point in time we were going to have to redo the appraisals once right-of-way was allowed to start back again. But we weren't, we had no authority to start back on right-of-way acquisitions.
Okay, well, I mean, that's, that's what, that's what you told us. So, so how long do right-of-way acquisitions take?
For a project this size, nine to 12 months. And right now, because appraisals taking as long as they are, 12 months is really what we're looking at.
And, and that's in your court, and only in your court? Or what can we do? Because what, what I want to do is come, and maybe we're doing this, and I know Christine's, I'm just kind of from the outside looking in for a little bit here, but what can we do to help facilitate that? Whether it's talking to a property owner or dealing with a top, to, to condense some of this timeline? Because again, if, if we're just leaving it up to DOT, and I'm not saying you're not doing your jobs and you're on it, but what can we do to help you? Help us help you?
So there's two things within the right-of-way acquisition that really aren't within our control, is how long the appraisals take, because they're done by a private appraiser. We do not do them in-house, we do not do them ourselves.
Third-party.
Third-party. So we have no control over how long they're going to take. I mean, we, we
We can ask them to make it a priority, and we will, we will be doing that for this project, but
But in the end, like I said, because they don't have, because they're
But shouldn't it, shouldn't that have been asked in like May? When, I mean, I mean, this project was approved in, what'd you say, '17?
So, you know, where I was trying to lead out with, with this, with this whole presentation, was the fact that, that these issues are present on many, many projects, right? This challenge is present on many, many projects. The, the issue with the appraisals, it's, it's ongoing. I mean, it's, it's a, it's an industry issue. Like, I think there's, you know, there's like, we're talking about doing mentorship programs or instituting some type of training program to get more appraisers, I mean, to, to have a long-term fix. But a short-term fix, it's us picking up the phone and saying, hey, can you get this one? Is this one going to be, can you get this one first? You know, and we're doing that, okay? We're trying to do that.
And I'm not saying, and I'm not saying that you're not, but it just seems like we're, we're climbing a greased hill here. And I'm afraid we're just going to backslide where this, this state's no longer even good.
So here's what we can do. We can condemn, okay? We can condemn property owners, power them at their name. We generally, that's not our first move, okay? Because that does not make for good relations with property owners, right? Most people take offense to that.
Wouldn't want to go there, go ahead.
But I'm thinking we're going to need to, in order to, that's one of the, maybe the triggers we could pull. We could, I mean, if, what, we get the first offer in, I mean, we could, we could do it.
We haven't settled the next couple of months on parcels, we're
I mean, I think we, I think what we could do, and I'm not sure, we'd have to track it, is based on, you know, when you, when you give them the appraisal, when you give them your first offer, and I apologize if I'm not going to quote it, but there is a minimum timeframe you've got to give that person. Okay, so it's 30 days. Day 31, we could then, we could do that. But condemnation sounds, you know, like, oh, it's a big bad state, they're just going to march over us, but we still are negotiating even after condemnation. So it will aggravate the property owners, right? It will. But it's something, it's a tactic we could apply in order to try to compress the schedule. That's one thing we thought about. It's not our go-to move, because we try to be good neighbors with folks. That may become necessary.
It will soon, but I don't, I don't know if it's necessarily going to happen, but the reality is if we haven't settled by, you know, I mean, to meet that certification, if we haven't settled by January and maybe February
Right, so maybe, maybe, you know, maybe we just make a collective decision to say, look, we've got to move it forward, we've got to, you know, if we're looking for ways to accelerate, then that's what we do.
So out of the eight right-of-ways that you need to get, we've gotten three appraisals back? Am I, is that right? I mean, am I looking, am I looking at that chart correctly? Or is that not accurate?
I don't know if that's right off the top of my head. I, I got an email with all the information. So several of the parcels have had appraisals and have come back. Some of the parcels have had appraisals that we're still waiting on. We, if, if the estimated land value is less than 20 or 25?
I would think it's 5,000.
It's 20, it should be 5,000, now it's 20 or 25. We can do what's called a claim report, and we can make an offer on that.
So do we have any appraisals that were, have not been done yet?
There's three parcels that we have done, made offers based on claim reports. And right now, we think that I, if I remember correctly, that those property owners are going to settle. And if they do, then we save the appraisal money. I mean, it costs us 5,000 to 8,000 dollars to get an appraisal. So if we can do a claim report, we always prefer to do that. The downside is we can't condemn.
So we have eight parcels. How many have you guys gotten thumbs up, we're good?
We have settled on nothing at this point.
Okay, how many have gotten appraisals? Like, have gotten the numbers back?
I think we're still waiting on two, so we've made three offers based on claim reports, so that means that's five parcels that are getting appraisals, and if I remember correctly, two of those haven't come back yet.
So we're only waiting on two parcels to come back in order for you guys to make an offer?
Right. How are those offers presented? And, and here's where I'm going with that. If, if someone gives me an offer and they said, okay, here's the timeline of these offers, and it's got, it's got down there, you know what? It's a pretty condensed thing, and at the end, one of it's this, I, I need to make a decision. And it may not work in my favor, but I think we're trying to meet in the middle, but I don't, I'm like you, I don't want to go with, you know, condemning property or taking a piece of property, but maybe it's presented in a way that says, okay, we're trying to get this done.
I think that's a standard approach. I mean, it's always, I mean, you think about the demands that we've got, especially in this area, I mean, it's, people even that live by, live here by these projects, even though they don't like a project, they're, it's hard to not recognize the need, right? So we're always saying, hey, we're trying to get this done, you know, we're, we are trying to draw closure on these things.
So we have, so we have two parcels that have not gotten an appraisal yet?
If I remember correctly, yes.
So the other ones, they have gotten their offers?
Yes.
And so we're past the 30-day mark? That they have not accepted these?
I think some of them are, but we're still trying to negotiate.
Yeah, still trying to negotiate. I mean, that's, that, and that is our standard approach.
A lot of the property owners have wanted changes to the plans, you know, we've got a few property owners that, you know, we were, we were putting in a four-to-one slope, and that's just, it's a relatively gentle slope that you can mow pretty easily, and that's typically our standard. But some of the properties wanted us to go to a much steeper slope, two-to-one, to avoid trees, to avoid impacts into their parcels, so we've been making those changes and working on that. We're currently, one property owner, we're talking about moving in a driveway because they feel it's too close to the, or the, the appraiser feels it's too close to the intersection, which they're not wrong. It's, it's not ideal. So we're working through those plan revisions at this time.
So once you get, so obviously you're not going to start condemning anything possibly until we get all of the appraisals back, correct? So you guys are continuing to go past the 30 days to try to figure out.
We can start condemnation on parcels before we start other ones if we need to.
I know. We don't, I don't want to go down that road. But this project has got to get done. It is, it is crazy. Like the fact that we're still talking about this and it hasn't gotten done yet is bonkers. So if we get those last two, once we get those last two appraisals back and we hit that 30-day mark, can you, like, will you guys come to us and be like, we haven't gotten three people? We've, I mean, we, we have to push this project forward. I like.
Maybe you, you guys would want to talk to property owners for us? Is that what you're suggesting?
I mean, we're, we're happy to do that.
I guess, that's going back to my point. Help, help us help you.
I'm thinking through that. I'm thinking through that, you know, from a legal standpoint.
We just don't want something or someone dragging the, I mean, you got a dime holding up a dollar.
We don't need, we do not want any, we don't want any more challenges.
I know, and that's what I'm saying. We're on the same team. I'm not yelling at you and I'm not going, what can we do to help you? Because we're just trying to get this move forward, you know.
And we, we, we don't understand how the, the, like, one week it's, we're moving forward and then all of a sudden.
And they may not have the answer. I guarantee, I know, I do. I have the answer because someone in Raleigh goes, hey, dude, I got, my, my stuff needs to get done over here.
Here's what I can say. Like I said, we started with this, the public involvement took a couple of months to get out and it took much longer to get out than it normally should have for right of reasons that I can go into if you really want to. But by the time that went out, we had started a hard look at a lot of our projects. And this is not the only project that we pushed.
Totally got it.
Okay, so we took a hard look at all of our projects and said, okay, if appraisals are taking longer than it, utility companies are requesting more time than they used to, do we think we can still make summer '22? And, and no, we didn't. But we already thought that was going to be tough anyways. Can we still make fall? And, and the reality is we don't think we could. So this project and I don't know how many other ones that we were planning in the summer of '22. Because when they, we, this was not the only project that started back in a right-of-way acquisition in May, or we'll say spring, because some were given approval at different months. What project got approval what month is beyond our control or my control at least. So, but we had a lot of projects that started back in right-of-way position in April, May, and June that we were trying, hoping to do in summer '22. And the reality is almost all of those aren't going to happen in summer '22.
There were several of them.
It was half of, maybe pushing 10 or 12. I mean, I don't remember exactly, but there were a lot of projects that we really wanted to do within one year. Just the reality is it wasn't going to happen.
I just want you guys to know the commitment. I mean, obviously, we've already stepped up. You said funding, we gave the funding. You said this, we've, we're in, we're in. So we're in, but now let's, we're in for the whatever is next that helps us push this along. Because again, honestly, if we don't help you in this process and somehow, and I'm not saying you're not doing your job or you can't do your job, I'm not saying any of that. But what can we do to help you? Because I'm afraid this date is going to be just an artificial date that we just, that's going to backslide again. Because again, someone's going to say, well, they didn't get that stuff done. And then it's getting, it's starting to get cold again. And you know what? We'll just, and that '22 becomes '23, it becomes '24.
It would take a very significant impact to move it beyond construction in '23. Very significant impact. I mean, beyond what we're, you know, typical project challenges. It would take something like a utility owner refusing to leave. You know, refusing to get out of the way, you know? And even then, you know, the strings we might be able to pull, the pressure points we might be able to apply would take some time to take effect. I mean, short of something like that occurring, we don't see this thing sliding.
Or COVID.
Or the COVID, or those, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if there's another budget change.
Nobody could predict that pandemic. I mean, I, I didn't believe it when I saw it happen in front of my face. But you're asking, what can you do to help us? And I'm, I'm racking my brain trying to think about that. I mean, what we're talking about.
We'll have to come up with the answer to that.
The logistics of the projects aren't what they are, right? It's this and every other project. We've got to go through a process. We've got to finalize these negotiations with the, with the property owners. We've got to tie that design down. We've got to get the appraisals on the final design. We've got to say, this is it. And we're trying to be there. We're really close to get those, those outstanding appraisals done.
Wait, what did you just say? We have to get the appraisals on the final design?
You can redline an appraisal. But if there's a very significant change, you wouldn't want to do it. I mean, at this point.
So you mean like a third leg to a fourth leg to back to a third leg, like that significant?
That actually won't require, that actually won't require a new appraisal. We're okay there.
Because we've already got it broken out.
Because see, to Joe's earlier point, we're not only pinched by the constituents here in Marvin. We're pinched by everyone looking at this group right here and going, what the hell are they doing?
Yeah, why aren't they getting something?
Because Waxall, they're fed up with it. Weddington, they're fed up with it. All the folks south of here, they're fed up with it. And they, and every time we send out a message and it says, oh, gosh, we pushed it back some, they look at this group right here and go, they don't know what the hell they're doing. They don't look at D, they don't look at DOT, they look at us.
This is a Marvin problem, not a DOT problem in their eyes.
Right.
Where Marvin?
Well, but in fairness, DOT looks at this as a Marvin problem, I believe. Because it's, because it's in our, it's in our jurisdiction. Otherwise, we should have been, it should have been funded from a safety standpoint or we just sit back and let accidents happen. And I will say, I had DOT, this was years ago. I took DOT in a meeting in a car and I was in Meadowlark. And I tried to get out of Meadowlark with him sitting right next to me. And he was scared for his life. And I said, oh yeah, you think you're scared now? I said, think about the six times buses have to get out of here in the mornings and in the evenings. And then when I invited officers there, this is before we really had established officers on this corner. I invited, there were probably five Union County officers way before you guys were in here. While we were sitting there looking at all the traffic, I won't say what the one officer said, but the lead officer said, this is an S show. And while he said that, there was an accident that happened right in front of us. This is, this is a serious safety issue that I don't know what needs to be communicated to the people. Maybe it's above you or whatever, but to the people that need to see this. Because if we did nothing, and again, it's not really Marvin's problem because the 16,000 cars can't possibly be Marvin's, but it's on us. But it is.
It's not a safety issue because we've rectified the safety issue.
But we're not getting any, we're not getting any funding is my whole point is, so what do you do?
No good deed goes unpunished.
We've got the project very close. You know, it's come a long way. There's been a lot of history. But the project is, we've, we've got funding. You know, we went through all that and we had to get a lot of stuff done and you guys helped us reach that final milestone. Okay, we came together, we found that. We know what's left to be accomplished before we can get this project physically constructed. We're going to continue to make every push possible. But the timeline is what the timeline is remaining in front of us. So figuring out how to deliver it quicker, you know, that, that one option, the condemnation option, even if we rent that route, I'm not convinced that we couldn't still run into that cold weather issue. You know, my hopes would be if we could do it in time to get just at least what we call the traffic in the final pattern. If the roundabout establish, it may not be the final lift of asphalt. It may ride rough over the winter, but it might function, right? We might go make something like that happen, you know? So we're going to continue to work towards that goal moving forward.
So Brett, real quick, if we're not, and just, I'm not, I'm not saying you know the answer to this. Real quick though, if we're not able to reestablish that donation and that could very well likely be gone. But if we're not able to reestablish it, then as far as you or DOT are concerned, then you would not be participating in, if we had to purchase that. If he wasn't going to donate and we had to purchase it, would that all be put on Marvin? Or would that be shared by Marvin and the state? If we had to purchase it for a fourth round? Because I'm really trying to scratch my head and find out how they get out of here.
Yeah, the, the money, the funding isn't currently there, right? We know we've got an estimate. Based on current estimates, we're saying we don't have the money to purchase it with the amount of money that we've got available for the project. So we don't have another funding source to tap.
But in the contract that says whatever the cost is, and that may be one of the costs is, is buying that, then it would split 50/50 if it's an overrun.
Well, no, I think if it's not donated, it goes back to the third leg, correct?
That's our, that, that would be our fallback position.
But if we, we wanted a fourth leg, and I'm saying that we, you know, because that, you got to show me how they get out of Meadowlark. But if we get a, we go back to the landowner and said, okay, what is it that you want? Since you're not going to donate, it's going to be X amount of dollars. My question is, because it is a project that always was four legs, the question is, would you be participating, would that be part of, okay, so say it's $200,000. Would we be on the hook for 100 and you guys be on the hook for 100? Or are you saying, no, that's all on Marvin?
I, I think the risk for us committing to that would be putting ourselves in a position to not have enough money when we got to the construction phase. If this thing goes to contract award, it's slightly higher. You know, we do have contingencies in our estimate. But if we commit to buying the right-of-way 50/50 with you guys and then it, it pushes us beyond the window of funding availability, well, then that would go back to you guys anyhow, I suppose. So maybe that, maybe that would work. I mean.
Yeah, but the way the contract, I thought, was the whole cost of the contract, whatever it is.
It is.
We're on the hook for 50%.
We also got to recognize that if we can't afford an overrun, we can't let the project. Because we don't have.
We're, we're on the hook for the 50% match.
Correct.
But if we get to the point of award and the, let's say it comes back and the bid's too high. We're, we're going to be in a real pickle then. Because we don't have, those, those funding sources that the NC DOT is matching with are finite. It's not like an STI project where you can, you know, justify some percent overrun. It would be, the money is not there. So I, I'm willing to consider working with you guys on that. I mean, maybe, you know, if we could take a harder look at the estimates and say, man, is this conservative? Do we think we're going to make it work?
We can definitely look at, I will say that we did get an email recently from the developer who's working with that property owner to build, I think, a subdivision. And he seems to still be on board with it. Problem is he doesn't own the land right now. So he's got to officially have the property owner, then he, or she, I think it was, you know, man. You know, he seems to be willing to, on that donation agreement. But again, until that developer owns the property, property, we can only deal with the property.
Right, right.
But we're, we're willing, Mary, to remain completely flexible and deliver what we can deliver. But right now, and, and it goes back, it'll go back to, you know, one of these things that gets on our slippery hill that we're trying to climb up, right? If, if we're, if we get to the point where we've got a plan in place, we need to be moving forward. If that property, if we need that property acquired to do utility relocations, which maybe we won't because it's so far south of it.
It's not. We, we actually don't need that parcel for any utility relocation.
That's a good, that is good news.
So even if that parcel takes longer to purchase, we can start utility relocation.
On the other, on the other part.
Once all the other parcels are settled, we can start utility relocation. So that parcel could lag behind the rest and not delay the project.
What do you have to move? Just power poles?
I think there's a couple of power poles. There's gas. Gas is probably the, and, and, you know, and power's not. The power just moves first and then wind stream, spectrum, whoever it is.
Right, the poles get set and everybody locates.
That's the part of the problem is, is they all work one at a time. So the power company is going to come in and move, then the next guy comes in and move.
Yeah, it goes up the pole.
Then the next guy comes in and move. And so that's what takes a long time. The moving, you know, Union, or this is Duke, I believe. They may only take three, four weeks, two weeks. But then the next guy needs, you know, one to two weeks. And the next guy needs one, two weeks. And the reality is, it's rare that they're going to start the day the first one stops. They're going to wait for it to stop and then go, okay, now we'll be ready. Because they don't want to trust the first property, the first utility company, hey, we'll be done March 15. They're not going to be there March 16th because what if they're not done?
But this is something that you guys can start before you let the project, correct?
Oh, yes, yes. Oh, it has to be. Because we, we, the last thing we would want to do would be to let the project utilities not be out of the way. Because then we've got to claim on our contractor. They're going to say, hey, those utilities weren't moved, guys, and now we owe them.
So as soon as you guys settle on right-of-way, then you guys can have them come in and start moving stuff.
Yes, and to Sean's point on that fourth leg, if that's still something outstanding, if there's no utilities on that parcel, that is really good information. Because it could be something we're still working on while we're moving utilities on other parcels.
So I have to assume that that's one of the two that you haven't gotten an appraisal back on?
Actually, we have, we have.
You have gotten that one, okay. But you don't know which two you haven't gotten?
I've got it in an email. I have the right-of-way acquisition firm, I have them send me details on where they were with everything and I've got that information. I just have to put it in my laptop and I can, I don't want to do it, have a good chance.
Okay, well, can you send that information to Christina? So that we can have that, because that would be helpful.
Real quick, and I know I want to get to all the council for council members, and it's not on their agenda. But I, you know, to Jamie's point earlier, sometimes we don't always know everything and stuff. So if there's, I, I'd like, if, if it's okay with council to open it up. Because I know we have some people on Zoom or in the audience here that have skin in the game, obviously, or are very concerned about this. So if it's okay with council, I'd like to get through council's questions. I think we're trying to knock off the questions we had, which we're getting some answers for. Is that, is that okay with you if we open it up and Bob's, Bob's okay?
I'm fine with it.
Okay, so we need a motion for that?
No, no.
Okay, so we're, we're going to, I'm going to open it up to the floor, which includes Zoom land out there and guests here of some questions that we're maybe possibly missing. I know we have some people that live in Meadowlark that.
I have questions.
Yeah, so we'll start with you then.
Okay, hi, my name's Kelly. I live in Meadowlark along with some of the other folks on here. So my first question to the village council and you guys is, since we've been in planning with this fourth leg for so long, and I know that, I'm pretty sure you guys have been talking to our former HOA president about acquisition. Do, does the going back to default, going back to third leg have to be default? Or can we just keep moving forward? Because we don't know how we would get out of our neighborhood and making us go right out, right in is going to devalue all of our properties, which I don't think is fair, saying that, you know, we have a property owner who doesn't even live here who is now reneging on a deal. So what can we do to help you move forward? To make sure that fourth leg goes in because A, it's a safety issue and B, none of us want right in, right out. Buses, I know we've got buses that are coming down there, multiple buses every day. So it's just, anyway, what can we do? And, and can we not go to third leg is default? Can we just go for fourth leg is in and whatever we got to do, whether it's condemn, whether it's whatever, let us help you. So.
So, so from.
Yeah, I don't care who, just somebody answer.
From NC DOT's perspective, I'll, I'll give you our, our answer. We, we are constrained fiscally, right? So we can only construct as much project as we have funding for. I don't think anyone has the appetite to delay it looking for more funding. But maybe there's an appetite to figure out a way to include the fourth leg to make, but, but, you know, it will be a little touch and go for a while to figure out, you know, do we really have enough money to do it? If it's up to us committing 50%, because that is our commitment for this project, 50% match.
Only overruns.
Only overruns. We don't, like I said earlier, that's a finite source of funds that we have. So we would struggle to be able to commit to that. But if there's another means to improve it, then we agree with you. It's a better case overall, a better condition overall. However, you know, you, you do get pinned down with what you can construct and what you can't when it comes down to a project like this that has these, these funding sources, that's a compilation, that's, there's hardly anything else we can tap into. There's nothing else we can tap into realistically. So I'm hopeful that we can continue to work with the town, continue conversations with this property owner, maybe this new developer, maybe there's a way to make it all happen. But at the same time, I've heard very clearly from this council and, and we agree, we need to get this project built. If police officers are out there constantly during the peak hours, right, directing traffic, we know this thing needs to happen. So I don't, at the same time, I don't want to, I don't want to risk delaying anything anymore to get the fourth leg in. So it's a pinch point, right? At some point, we'll have to, to, to click, click go, right, and decide. You know, we, we've got project plans, you know, we can keep going. But, you know, our design is currently fourth leg, we need to adjust if we're not going to do it. But then do we adjust back? You know, those are engineering expenses, you know? It impacts things like erosion control plans and just, you know. So I don't want it to impact the schedule. We want to deliver the best project we can deliver. So it can't totally impact the schedule project. So that's the struggle we're in.
So did I hear you correctly? And the person that we're negotiating with doesn't live there?
No, our, our right-of-way acquisition firm is going to be donating with whoever is on record for owning it.
And he doesn't live in Marvin?
He doesn't live, he doesn't live anywhere in the county.
And he owns the property then?
But he owns the property, yeah.
Okay, so I, I'll step up and say, that would be my point of going, okay, here's your timeline, here's your offer, and look at the last thing that you need to consider because we'll just take it. Because that person's impacting you and all of your neighbors. And I don't, if, if the person was living there and had a pinch point.
But if we take it, if we say we're condemning, means we're buying.
No, I understand, I understand that. But, but again, I'm going to go back to, you're, you got a dime holding up a dollar. You got one person holding up, not just Marvin. You're going to have one person that's going to, they're holding up the entire neighborhood and potentially be holding up, you're, you're dealing, it's, this is an expanded issue. This isn't just a Marvin issue. That's why.
Oh, we agree.
The heightened urgency in it is because you're holding up Waxall, Weddington, Marvin, Minto Springs. You're holding up all of that and you got one person going, nah, I just don't feel, and by the way, I don't even live here.
So.
But at the end of the day, I think it just comes down to, in fairness, at, at one point, it was going to be donated. Now, for whatever reason, which I haven't gone, I just learned of it now too, is not going to be donated. So it's, it's, there's going to be a number assessed. It's not saying we can't do it. It's just what's that number that's.
Correct. We got to donate everything needed for the fourth leg. It's going to cost us more than if we just, sorry, we have, than if we just condemn for what's needed for the three-legging round.
So have you gotten the appraisal for the, for the red area, which is 11,000 square feet?
Yes.
And then the green is 13,000, which is the part that's in question here.
Correct.
So there's 2,000 square foot difference in the two pieces of property. So that gives us a ballpark, if you have that appraisal, of what this other piece would, would cost us.
Correct.
So it gives us an estimate of what we're looking at in overruns, correct?
In theory.
Do you have that? Well, I mean, it's, it's.
The appraisal world is polite.
It may not, yeah, so, yeah, I've seen appraisals on properties right next to each other that don't always come back the same. So I can't guarantee.
Well, this is, okay, but the, the property is not road frontage for one. And it's, and it's also just unimproved property. So for it to go.
But you said that you've gotten that appraisal back.
We've gotten the appraisal for the, so here's what we did. Because we, we understand that it was going to be donated when we ordered the appraisal. The appraisal was only for the red part.
Okay, but you did get that appraisal.
So we need the green part.
No, only for the red part.
No, well, they didn't go after the green because that was initially going to be donated. So that makes sense.
But what I'm saying is it gives us some kind of a benchmark to work from.
Correct. We could take the value of the red and estimate.
Estimate the value of the green where we know where we're going for the additional funds. So we have some kind of an idea of what we need to get for that extra, if we can't get it, donate.
What's the firm, I don't know, I mean, they have one.
We could use that for decision-making purposes, planning, thinking this is going to work.
That's what I was getting at.
Get the appraisal done and all that.
So now you're going to have to have the appraiser come back in.
If we had to condemn.
Okay.
Could you, what's the difference, is, are easements even a thing that can happen? Like, if we were to grant you an easement and not sell you our portion, like, because you're, we don't even matter at this point, because if the fourth, if the fourth leg doesn't happen, you don't even need-
Anything.
The Meadowlark property, right?
Yeah.
And I'll talk to you about something else later, but it wasn't on the record. But, I mean, like, could, could they not grant an easement?
So our roadway needs to be within right-of-way, for us to make that. We do temporary construction easements to build the roadway, we don't-
But the roadway itself and items associated with it, drainage, ditches, that needs to be in-
In right-of-way.
Right-of-way, if you're speaking. Maybe some.
Because I know we have an easement to the middle of Newtown Road. Like, our road goes to the middle of Newtown Road, so.
Yeah, because we don't have recorded right-of-way on Newtown. Yep. We go, we consider maintenance right-of-way, we legally can maintain everything, including the ditches, but yeah, recorded right-of-way. Now, that's, most of our secondary-
Lot of property owners have property ownership.
Well, I mean, can I, I thank you guys for answering, and thank you for your additional comments. I would really like to hear from the council just in general of, are you guys willing to help fight for this fourth leg so that our neighbors can safely get out of our property? Because having, if you, if you look at the old third leg, Meadowlark dumps out right where everyone's exiting out of the roundabout. And with 16,000 cars, we can't get out now. I mean, with everything moving, like, you know, moving all the time, we're never going to be able to get out. I mean, it'll, it'll be just as dangerous for us trying not to get hit, because you know.
It'll actually be worse.
Probably.
I see it as being worse.
Yeah. It would need to be. If it's that close, you said that leg had to move? If you did know the fourth leg? Or is that right? Am I looking at the wrong thing?
I have my friend.
I mean, you can't, well, you're not going to be able to have, you know, an intersection built on top of it, right? You would almost need to be right in right.
Yeah, it would almost have to be right in right.
Yeah. So if it goes to right in, right out, from a safety perspective, you'll have, that's a much more safer condition for-
You would still be able to turn left in, in a way, you just go through the roundabout and come back.
Yeah. So left in, you have, by way of the roundabout, but left out, you wouldn't have. So.
You'd have to go down to the other roundabout, come back to, you know.
Which, if it was real close, wouldn't be that bad.
Yeah, because really close, that's actually a good treatment.
So like, you know, a couple thousand, a couple thousand square feet are going to literally keep, are going to literally keep us from utilizing a road that we have an easement towards the middle of, and reduce all of our property values. And our, our neighborhood is, I don't know if it's one of the oldest in Marvin, but it is, it was established in like the 80s. So like, our neighbors have lived here longer than, well, except for the farmers who've lived here for generations, but, you know, it's, it's one of the more established neighborhoods. So it's just really unfortunate that, like, one thing is going to, is going to really hurt our neighbors.
I'm really hopeful that the developer is still, that still moves forward with everything and buys that parcel in and is willing to agree with it. He says he's willing to agree with it, he just hasn't closed on that property yet, and he's still working through approval to actually build. And I, and not blaming him, I wouldn't buy it until you actually have to pay him a bill. I mean, that, that makes sense. So I don't know where they are with that process.
And to answer your question, as far as, I don't vote, but I, my goal, I remind people that, I don't vote. I don't vote, but my goal is to get that fourth, that makes total sense. So it's just about negotiating, and I, I don't know if we want to take it to council that, because I don't even know if we have to go down that road yet. But I think everyone is on the same page, it's just a matter of if there's going to be a number to that or not. And I don't want to put anyone on the spot, but I think the owner of the property's on the call if he wants to comment. But, and I'm not going to say you have to or not, but the, if there's any other comments or questions from the Zoom world, I'll call it, let's call it, so.
We're WebEx.
WebEx. Any, anyone want to unmute and make a comment or a question? Okay, I'm not seeing anyone, so that's fine.
I have some quick questions, this is Eric Burke. So in the interim, while we're waiting for all this, a couple of things in that intersection. One is the massive pothole that's around the right side of that.
Right, right.
If you, that gets, they pour some, yes, rocks in it every couple of weeks, but if we get that fixed, that's a huge issue. And then the other thing I'll mention is, they put up a sign, you can't make a left if you're coming off Newtown to Marvin, between like, whatever it is, 4:30 to 6:30?
Yes.
3:30.
3:30.
Okay, so 3:30. It'd be great to have that also in the warning slot, because that's, that's when the high school kids on our side are coming out of that, that road and in that intersection.
Yeah. Eric, just for the record, you're in the neighborhood or?
Ennisbrook.
Ennisbrook, okay.
Ennisbrook.
Thank you. So, good question. I know just every time we, I think the processes, we call you guys, and you guys come up and throw some-
We'll take care of the pothole, and we will look at that signage request, that timer.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, because you guys did it for the afternoon, so maybe the morning would be good too.
And this, the only thing that's restricted is the left turn off of Newtown on Marvin.
Correct.
Right. That just helps with the flow of traffic, and it's safer for the officers too. They, they appreciate that a lot.
So we're looking at doing that as an interim.
Correct.
But in the morning timeframe, in addition to the-
Correct.
So, so you guys say you're struggling with cost and stuff like that. We have a budget that we have to follow. I think we even asked if we could put construction guys there rather than officers there. Construction guys that you can plant in there, because we're going to be doing construction there, so why not? It's going to be a lot less money, I think, than whatever we're spending. But a lot of times, people follow construction signs. If you put constructions up there, and they got slow or stop, and they can direct traffic. But who shot that though?
It was, it was a lot more expensive.
It was?
Actors. They're all out of work.
Yeah, we get hacked now.
I'm all about solutions. So I'm not going to-
Well, it was intense. Okay. All right. Well, there wasn't many more questions, but, so we can, we're going to take care of the man-eating hole on the corner.
It's on the shoulder of the red, right?
Yes.
Okay.
In the DOT world, it's really not called a pothole, it's just a hole.
Well, it's-
But we're going to call it a pothole and face it.
This though.
So earlier, you, the question was asked if you had any discretionary funding to help with some of this safety hazard. You mentioned that there's none in the division. Is DOT broken down into districts and then divisions? I.e., would the district have DA funds?
No, we're broken into divisions and then districts, actually, in this, in this thing.
So where, where do we stand? And I know you guys have gone to Wuma.
Yes.
And you've asked, you've asked for funds from Waxall and, or from-
Yeah, Waxall's not part of Wuma.
Weddington.
They're our biggest offender with traffic.
Yeah.
So I think we need, I think we need to have a serious conversation with, sit down with the mayor of Waxall and have a serious conversation with him.
But, but it's also incorporated Union County, I mean, you know.
I get it, but start-
The Union County could be in on that too.
But we need to have a serious conversation with them. Because let's figure out what we can do and not sit idle. So we're, we've had the discussion with DOT, there, we're, I think we're singing from the same hymn, but what can we do to mitigate even more of what's happening here? Because again, we're the, we're the burden of all of it, and we're not, like, to Jen's point, we're not 15,000 cars. And if I'm a-
So that becomes more of a Union County, because Union County can, I would think, it would become Union County.
So then we go to Union County, and we start raising hell with them and twist their arm. Because guess who votes in Union County? People from Marvin.
No, I, I agree. It's, you know, I think the first time we approached it, it was like, why would we be in, you know, in that corner, even though-
Silly Joe.
It is, it is majority of non-Marvin residents. Bob, do you have anything? I see you sitting there. Do you have any questions?
You're muted, Bob.
Can you hear me?
There you go.
Yep.
Okay, good. No, I mean, the council is saying, in fact, Councilman Lyon just said what I was about to say, was about going out, reaching out to the other communities that are affecting our community. I guess, you know, I'm looking at the overall picture here, you know, 30,000 feet, and I'm asking myself, you know, this is before really, you know, what would be my time, but, and I know Councilman Lyon's time, but, I mean, this whole roundabout was designed to make traffic flow. We have a traffic problem in Marvin. And, you know, my first thought was, why are we accommodating and making the traffic flow to the other communities? You know?
Because we care about our kids.
And as you said, Mayor, we're spending money to make, and of course, also, Councilwoman Vanderberg said, you know, we're here trying to make it safe. We're taking on the responsibility of making that intersection safe. I keep looking at it and going, I don't want traffic, I don't want people to go into that intersection. It is affecting the people at Meadowlark, other property owners, and I, I mean, I don't mean to sound, I mean, I don't mean to sound the way I'm sounding, but, you know, I'm thinking to myself, I'll tell you what, we've got DOT on the phone right now, put up three stop signs and make it as miserable as heck, anybody going to that intersection. I know that sounds, you know, radical, but I'm thinking, in the meantime, put up stop signs, and we'll see how many people, you know, and get, you know, eliminate the Union County Police, the Sheriff's. And go ahead and have everybody back up to South Carolina, back up to Marvin, and see how long that lasts. I'll bet you everybody will find another way. The unfortunate thing is I know which way they're going to go.
I'd still make them no left turn.
I'm frustrated, because this, like everybody else, it's been going on for a long time, and I'm, and I'm hearing why. And maybe, you know, we're trying to bend our backwards to try to make that fourth leg happen, which I believe, as I'm, you know, hearing the folks in Meadowlark, it needs to happen. So I'm behind making the fourth leg happen, just like you, Mayor. I mean, in the meantime, I'm saying to myself, we're spending money on, on the sheriff's department, big D O T here, put up four stop signs, or three stop signs, and let's make it miserable for people to go through that intersection until we can make it happen. And again, I know it sounds radical, but we're trying to solve a problem here, which is traffic. And, you know, we're spending a lot of time and effort trying to make traffic flow when we wish the traffic wasn't here to begin with. But, you know, I'm with everybody else. Everybody's saying and asking the right questions on the council, so I'm with everybody.
Okay, thank you. And then I believe we have a hard stop at 7 o'clock, so I apologize for not necessarily cutting it short, but we're trying to get through as many questions as we can. Anything else from council?
Only thing I'll say is, I'm willing to, I'm willing to, whatever I need to do to go to Union County, to set up a meeting with the county commissioners at Union County, I'll be happy to go if somebody wants to join me, to see what we can do to get funding from them, to take, if it's a 50/50 or something, that we can do, and we need to press them, that takes care of the sheriff's department, and anything that we need to do with negotiating on, moving forward on the fourth leg, I'm, I'm open to that too.
A quick question, knowing what you know about roads. If we did temporarily put stop signs in?
Half to one mile back.
What?
Between half and one mile back.
Which would, again, go to his point, make it miserable to come through this-
It would actually go through other roundabouts too.
It would be, it would be-
Or cut through neighborhoods.
Yeah.
When they could.
It would lock up the roundabout downstream.
Right, yeah. I figured that, that would make sense, that that would lock up that.
It would not be a solution that we could, of course.
We looked at it. I just would say what you're doing.
It would be utter chaos. The four-way over here in South Carolina is already-
It would be irresponsible.
Yeah. I believe it was the county sheriff, just FYI, it is so dangerous there, they need two officers.
I mean, it would make the intersection in theory safer, but I don't know how many-
It would work fine out of the peak hours, probably.
Oh, yeah, outside of peak hours, it probably would fine.